[Music]
Meeting is Tacoma Park City Council to order. Will Clark please call the roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mall. Councilmember Stewart. Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Fokes.
Here.
There are no additional agenda items this evening. One thing as far as the upcoming agendas, I want to remind my colleagues that any edits to the proposed Tacoma Junction resolution need to get to the city manager soon. She would like to post that tomorrow or Wednesday at the website to make sure people have a chance to look at it.
See, you expect to post a revision?
Yes.
This Thursday, April 9th, we have a budget work session at 7:30 and we'll be discussing housing and community development, general government and non-departmental. Next Monday, there's a reception at 6 o'clock in the atrium lobby. This reception will be for the newly appointed city manager Suzanne Liddler. And that evening, we will have a budget public hearing beginning at 7 o'clock. And the regular meeting will include resolutions on selecting a Tacoma Junction development firm, commenting on the proposed zoning text amendment 1504, which we will be discussing tonight, and a resolution regarding the Piney Branch Pool. And then next Wednesday, April 15th, Tax Day, we will have a budget work session on Public Works, Stormwater, capital budget, the equipment replacement reserve, and the The following Monday, April 20th, there's a council work session with a presentation of the report of the Residential Streetscape Task Force and a couple of work session items, including an update from the police chief. That Thursday, April 23rd, we will have a budget work session at 7:30 discussing recreation, police speed camera fund, and communication. And then the following Monday, April 27th, we have our second budget public hearing and budget work session with budget reconciliation. So that kind of takes us through meetings for the remainder of April and encompasses a good bit of the budget process. Then I'll note for the record, two proclamations. One that was issued on May 24th declaring support for the 2015 Playful City application. We have done this every year, making sure that there are opportunities to give all children the opportunity, not only all children, but all adults as well, the opportunity to play in the city, and this is something that's part of the application process. And then this evening, I have a proclamation supporting Arbor Day this year, and that will be celebrated on this Saturday, April 11th, at the library from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. So that takes care of proclamations for the record. I will now move to public comments, and this will be an opportunity for anybody to comment on any topic, whether it's our work session item, or I would suggest if there are comments on the budget, wait until we get the presentation and there's a public hearing next week. And anything that's not on the budget, and anybody who'd like to speak, please come to the podium, identify yourself, and keep your comments to three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kierfe Show. I'm the chair of the Business Department at Washington Adventist University, and there are a couple of things we'd like to share. Alumni Weekend is this weekend, starting Thursday night. On Friday night, there will be a concert. And great music. Come out and participate. On Saturday night, at the banquet, the Alumni Awards banquet is at 7:30 at the Sheraton in Silver Spring, and our mayor will be honored there. So if you would like to participate, tickets for the dinner will be available for purchase. And we'd love to see you guys come out and participate. We have a lot of good activities going on this weekend.
And do you have something on Sunday as well?
Yes, we do.
Ah, somebody else can talk about that?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashley Chambers. I am a senior at Washington Adventist University. I am also the student coordinator for Family Fun Festival, which will be happening on Sunday, April 12th. From 12 to 5, we would like to invite you all to come out and support and enjoy the day with us. Family Fun Festival, family fun, food, games for the kids, activities for people of all ages. We would love to see you all there. We will have flyers in the lobby for you all, and hope to see you on Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you. And the city will have a table there?
Yes.
Yes. So we, sorry, we will leave the Alumni Weekend flyers and the Family Fun Festival flyers right out here in the lobby. If anyone is interested, they can pick some up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, and congratulations again, Ms. Liddler, for city manager. My name is Patrick Farley. I'm the chief financial officer at Washington Adventist University, and we have a proposed capital project we're working on to help improve the site on Maple Avenue. And you should have a handout in front of you, and if there's anyone in the audience that would like a handout, I have them also available for you as well. This project is basically, we have a very old building and a dilapidated tennis court that have a number of cracks and so forth through them, and it's really in bad shape. And what we're proposing to do is to build a health careers and wellness center there at this building, and this building would extend about another 20,000 square feet of space. This building would be approximately 51 feet tall and would have an offset from the street of 29 feet. This building would also have an additional level for additional classrooms, but in addition to that, it would have a rehab center, which would allow the community to take potentially some educational and other outfits. So overall, the mission of this building is to provide education to both the community and to our students as we proceed along in the healthcare careers and wellness. Are there any questions?
Say it.
Text amendment? Sure. So the text amendment, I believe here, listed as ZTA 1504. This is a broad text amendment that would allow a 65, up to 65 feet for educational institutions and so forth. And what we are seeking to do is, because of our attorneys told us that primarily that we don't, the only legal request we have is for is building a building higher than the current 30 feet, which would be 51 feet for us, would be to do a text amendment. We want feedback from Tacoma Park. We'd like to work with you to come up with a good amendment that benefits the entire community and that we think will, hell, oops, time's up.
Nope, nope, keep going.
You have 30 seconds.
Oh, that's a 30 second. Never been on a timer before, so, excuse me. Anyway, so the bottom line is this, that we are part of the community, and we want to continue to help with the community when it comes to the text amendment, and be able to provide for our building so that we can serve the community.
Thank you.
Mr. Farley, may I ask, if the building is going to be 51 feet, why are you seeking a ZTA for 65 feet?
I believe that was an architectural recommendation. We're willing to adjust that.
An architectural recommendation from the university's architect?
It was a recommendation from the university's architect. Again, it was a broadly written amendment. We don't plan on building a 65-foot building at this time, so from our point of view, we are willing to make whatever adjustments are necessary for the building. The only reason we're going for a text amendment was because our lawyer told us that we would not be able to get a variance. That was primarily the purpose.
What is the total, I'm sorry, I haven't seen this proposal before now. What is the total lot area and the total, I guess we'd call it the floor area ratio and the developed area ratio in the lot?
Okay, so currently, there's a tennis court there.
Sure, well, of course, I mean the building that you're proposing.
Oh, the building you're proposing? It adds about 23,000 square feet, so it's a three-story building. So from the lot area, it would be about, I would say, a little bit, one half to about three-quarters of where the tennis court is.
Okay.
There are two tennis courts next to each other.
Is there any parking associated with this new building as part of the construction within the, within the lot?
No, we don't expect this to be a building that would increase traffic.
So you mentioned a 29-foot setback from the street. What is the setback from the sidewalk? Do you know what the sidewalk width is there?
It's about standard sidewalk length. It has a number of electrical poles next to it and so forth.
That's fine. Is there space that is undeveloped at the rear of the building, the planned building? Away, on the side of the building away from the sidewalk?
No.
It attaches to a building.
I don't have any other questions for you at the moment. Thank you.
Yeah, and if you're going to stick around for our discussion
Sure.
on the agenda, that would be helpful then if we've got more questions.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for this opportunity.
Yes.
It's hard to see in the handout on figure two, where it shows the elevation. It's hard to see what the heights are on there?
Yeah, figure two shows the old building next to it, and to the right of that, you see the other building, which is the 51-foot building. It's about the same height as Halcyon Hall, which is right next door to it. So in this situation, you have a dormitory that's about the same height as the proposed building, and then next to that, there's a gym, which would be a little bit lower than that.
Okay. And that, so that 51 feet is to the top of the third story, and then there's the utilities above that?
No. The utilities would be in a basement constructed for a mechanical room. So there would not be any air handling operations on the roof. It would be in a utility basement.
Thank you.
And I believe that's in the diagram here on page four. If you look on the top picture to the right, you see a mechanical room, and that's where the basement is.
Thank you.
What type of materials will you use for the facade of the building?
The facade of the building will be a combination of glass and, and concrete, not concrete, but a rock or a finished brick type of, sort of grayish-looking brick.
Has the architect done any studies to show how sunlight will project onto the homes across the street?
Yes, I believe the architect has done some of those things. We also, when we first started thinking about this building, we invited the current city manager there to walk down and show them where the building would be, and so they'd get an approximation of how high the building would be in relationship to Maple Avenue.
And so in those studies with it being a glass building, will the sun reflect into people's homes, or?
Well, it's not an entirely glass building. It has a glass corner with some brick around and brick facade. It's not a red brick, it's a grayish brick.
If we can continue this conversation when we get to the work session.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Additional public comment?
Lorraine Pierceall, on behalf of this dark Tacoma, I'm going to ask you to oppose this ZTA unquestionably. This ZTA will give any private educational institution or parochial school located in a building or on premises owned or leased by any church or religious institution, organization, the government of the U.S., the state of Maryland, or any state agency, Montgomery County, or any incorporated village or town within Montgomery County, to have 65 feet as a matter of right. And this does affect us. We have a daycare center operated by Montgomery College. We have buildings that Montgomery College could certainly lease. We have the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church that has a daycare, and suddenly, we can find 65-foot buildings in our communities. This is, this ZTA is the worst example of spot zoning I have ever seen. It is an extreme measure for a single building to get 14 additional feet, and it wreaks havoc with all our neighborhoods, not just in Tacoma Park, but it will across the county. I just simply do not understand how council member Lorraine could have authored something like this, and I ask you to please oppose this. There has to be another way that Washington Adventist University can solve the issue of 14 feet of space somehow for one building without subjecting all of us to this. And I will say, all of us live in fear of some of our institutions becoming private that are public now. This would make 65 feet a matter of right. It would make, give people no ability to go to a hearing to protest this. It would say 65 feet is compatible. It is not compatible with our community, and I ask you, please, to strongly oppose it. And a question I have for the city, and Suzanne, perhaps you can tell me. I noticed that this is dated in February, this ZTA. I just learned about this today. Nobody in my North Tacoma neighborhood knows about this yet. There was virtually no time to inform anyone, because these things come to you on a Friday, and they don't get out till Monday. So I'm asking you, as part of perhaps a new policy city manager, that you could make sure that we have a week to digest these things, and, you know, why is it that the county was discussing this February 27th, and somehow Tacoma Park is so impacted but didn't know about it? That's a big question for you.
We didn't know that.
You did?
We did not.
You did not, and so that is amazing to me. So please oppose this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, everyone. Mayor, councilmembers, city manager. My name is Brandon Johns. I work with Making a New United People. There are some of my other staff members and peer mentors with us as well from Man Up, and I'm coming today because we submitted a proposal for, or request for, funding inside this year's budget, and I just want to give you a little bit of background on Man Up and what we do. For the ones that do not know us, we are a mentor organization. We mentor underserved youth in the area, and mainly, we've started in Tacoma Park in 2009. So now this is our sixth year that we're in right now. We've been serving Tacoma Park youth. We serve them in a number of areas, education areas, educational, we provide support in, support in education and other life skills as well around conflict resolution, financial management, health, and things like that nature. We meet every Tuesday at the mentoring, I'm sorry, every Tuesday at the teen lounge right in this building. We also have an art program we started on Monday, so it'll also now be on Tuesday, starting back up in May. We started it last year. We also have a basketball program now that we run once a month. Our first basketball program was actually on CBS News. We partnered with the Hank Gathers Legacy Group, which is named after the late, great Hank Gathers. We work with his son. And we also now work in schools. We work in schools as a mentor organization in the school in Prince George County, and we also work with schools in Montgomery County, starting at the end of April. So at this point, we're trying to fill, we actually are bringing on full-time staff and trying to become more of a full-fledged organization, and in doing that, we would like to have support from the Tacoma community as well. Like I said, we've been here six years now. We've affected a lot of youth, probably over 400. We've seen increased attendance in school and things like that, but now we're at a point where we're trying to see more, be more in-depth. A lot of, what we do is also taking trips for the youth and things like that, trying to expose them, adding to our funding, adding to our staffing, allows us to do more for youth and really expose them to the things they aren't exposed to now in life. So this year is a really year we're trying to do more and really expand what we've done in the past. So the support back from the city council and the members will do a lot for our organization and for the youth in Tacoma as well, who are in dire need of it. So, thank you very much.
When you say youth, what age are you talking about?
12 to 19. We also have a peer mentorship program, so we have youth who now have graduated out of our program that now mentor those younger youth as well. So they go up from really 19 to 23.
Thank you.
And how much is your budget request?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And sorry, we won't be able to stay the whole time. We have another meeting to attend, but we do apologize. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovelace?
Hello, my name is Pat Lovelace. Is this thing on?
Yes.
Yes. My name is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. There's a couple of things I'd like to bring up. One thing is, is I hear some rumblings about them closing the pool again, and we need as many people out there as possible who want to keep our pool open. Just come down and speak up. Also, there's a petition going around Franklin Apartments, there's petitions going around, and there's petitions going around other places too, I'm sure. So I'd like to, if you see a petition on opening the pool, keeping the pool open, do it, sign it. Could be the best signature of your life. And also, it's a great time for community participation. This is what happens when people don't act like they care about anything. They lose their, they lose what they've already got, and they won't realize it until it's gone. So please, everybody, speak up about that. And also, on January, I mean, on April 18th, I hear they're having the celebration for the 125th anniversary of Tacoma Park kicking off. If you could give some more information on that, the time and the place and everything, it would be really appreciated, so I can get the word out, because a lot of people I talk to appear interested, and I'd like to see what we can do to encourage more people to fill these seats when times are needed, like to save our pool. So please, everybody, this is very important. Once they close that pool, that pool is done, we may never get it open again. So please, older people need to use their water aerobics, and other people need to get a hot, dip, work in the hot sun. Children like to play for it in the pool, so why should we keep taking away from the elderly, the needy, and the children? Why do we keep taking away? This is not a game of takeaway anymore. This is a game of we get a stand-up for what we've already got, not lose it, not just sit back like an ass on a log and let them lose it. So please, don't let them take our pool away. And I'm asking maybe if the Young Activists Club would get invited, involved in this, and get other people involved in this, and please, anybody listening, for God's sake, don't let them close our pool. Get involved. You will love it, you will love it, you will love it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Diana Cohn, 16 Jefferson Avenue, president of Historic Tacoma, and Mayor Bruce started out today talking about two proclamations. There's one proclamation that we should honor the city with, but the council can't because it would have to go to the council. I'm referring to the fact that last Friday, the city of Tacoma Park is officially 125 years old. The Maryland governor signed the Act of Incorporation on April 3rd, 1890, creating the town of Tacoma Park, Montgomery, and Prince George's Counties. The Tacoma Park Citizens Association was responsible for this feat, and to appreciate how big a deal it was, it's worth noting that there were barely 300 residents in Tacoma Park on the Maryland side in those days. That was 12% of the population of the county, of Montgomery County, but not very many people to go petition the state assembly for something like incorporation. The election for mayor and council was then set for May 5, so I guess the council itself isn't quite 125 years old, but you soon will be. So we are celebrating the 125th milestone, as Mr. Lovelace just mentioned, with a whole series of events, starting with, and next week, two events. One is the unveiling of a plaque honoring former mayor and former and powerful city activist Sammy Abbott. That's on Tuesday. Then on Saturday is the kickoff for the official 125th celebration with past and former mayors and council members as the honored guests. That's at 7:30 at City Hall here. And then there is a whole roster of quintessential Tacoma Park events for the rest of, the rest of the year, basically, starting out with Earth Day and Favorite Poems and Art Hub, Sweep the Creek, the Historic Tacoma's House and Garden Tour on May 3rd, all the way through May Celebration of Tacoma Park, the Tacoma Jazz Fest in June, Community Supper for the Entire Community set for July 20th, and I am very
June 20th.
I'm sorry, you're right. June 20th, and I am very pleased to announce that the Fourth of July Parade has been saved thanks to a new crew of volunteers, so there will indeed be a parade and fireworks on Fourth of July. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. How are you doing today? My name is Anthony Goodson. I'm also a part of the Making the New United People organization, and just wanted to say a couple of additional points without trying to sound too redundant from what Brandon said. I just wanted to touch on a few things as far as why we would really benefit from some additional funding towards our organization. Like Brandon said, we've been an organization in Tacoma Park for over six years now, and for about 80 to 90% of that six years, we haven't received any direct funding. All the funding we've received for our organization, we personally raised ourselves. We've had parties and fundraisers, and, you know, we do solicitations, and we do, we've been in the parades, and we've done everything we can do to gather funds on our own, out of the kindness of our own hearts, really, you know, just to be able to give back to the community and be able to work with the kids. I also just wanted to make a couple of quick points about how the Man Up program isn't just a program that directly affects the youth itself of Tacoma Park, but the entire city of Tacoma Park in various different ways. Brandon Johns is a part of the Youth Collabo, which combines the community in itself and it also combines all the demographics of the community and brings everybody together in that aspect. I personally met with the mayor to discuss building jobs and job creation programs that we've had and to give kids opportunities to give back and to be a part of the economic, you know, status of Tacoma Park. We've also had multiple forums and multiple personal meetings with the police chief and the police and the sergeant, and multiple high ranks of the different law enforcement of the area in hopes to affect crime, in the hopes to put neighbors more at ease from some of the concerns they've had concerning the youth, and just to affect that in a positive way overall. We've also wanted to help expand the kids' horizons in our, in our organization. A lot of the kids, you know, they know Tacoma Park, and they know Silver Spring, and that's kind of the limit to their, to their knowledge, even with schooling, you know, they go to the local schools and the colleges. They go to Montgomery College, or they go to other local colleges. go to Montgomery College, or they go to other local colleges. But if we had more funding and more money to take them places and expand their horizons and show them what's out there, that in itself would bring Tacoma residents outside of Tacoma to have a more effective upon the world, representing Tacoma Park, of course, making a good shine on us. And also, just the active programs that we've had. When we first started, we were doing one program a week. Now we're doing four or five programs a week, and we're in the, we're in everywhere, we're in everything. And we just, you know, we appreciate you guys giving us the time and the venue to do the things that we do. We appreciate the, we appreciate the space that you guys give us, because without that, we wouldn't have anything. But just any additional help that can be provided for us will certainly go a long way and directly affect the city in pretty much every way you can count. Just wanted to say that. Thank you. Yes.
One thing I know that's going to help me make a decision on that is to get some feel for what that thirty thousand dollars would be doing, what you would plan to do with it. And I don't want to do that tonight, but, but if you could submit something to the council that describes basically what kind of programs you're talking about implementing, what that kind of money.
Yes.
I should share the proposal with this.
Yeah, everything would definitely be broken down and very detailed and diligent.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll go to council comments. Councilmember Schultz.
Okay. I just, everybody's probably wondered why I'm wearing a hoodie here tonight. But it says Duke. And so I just, you know.
I won't let my son look at you that.
Just so you know where I'm coming from, okay? You don't want to mess with me.
Oh.
At least not tonight, anyway.
So we're just going to bounce you around on the floor?
That's right. That's right. Anyway, that was all in fun. Now to get down to some serious stuff. By the way, this thing is warm. This past Sunday, a week ago, I had the opportunity to attend the Hampshire Towers Appreciation Day event, which was an event put on by the new owners of Hampshire Towers, which is right next door to the Tacoma Park Recreation Center. It's an eleven or twelve-story building that has apartments for about, well over two hundred apartments there. And I know the people in Man Up are very familiar with the young people that live in that building. It's, it's affordable housing, and it's also a miniature United Nations. People who live there from all parts of the world, a lot of them from Africa. That property is just, as I've mentioned in previous public comments, it just was purchased last month by the Orlo Fund. It's a group out of Laurel, Maryland. And the Appreciation Day was put on by the new owners to, as an opportunity for them to say hello to all the tenants. And basically, they had a ton of free food, they were selling it at a very nominal price, snowballs, popcorn, hot dogs, candy, spun candy, whatever you call that stuff. I used to crave it when I was a child. And all the proceeds are going to go to the tenant association. The reason I'm mentioning this is that it's been less than a month, I believe, that the new company has purchased that building, and they've already undertaken dramatic renovations of that building. They started out within days, a couple of days after they closed on the property. And they have found some fairly terrible conditions, and they knew a lot of what they were buying. But I spoke at length with the president of the Orlo Fund, a gentleman by the name of Aaron Orlovsky. For example, they found that all the exhaust vents that come out of every bathroom in the building and go up to the roof, all of the electric fan motors on the roof were burnt out. So there was no exhaust in any of the fans, and as a result, all the ducts are full of mold and clogged up with other detritus that had been sitting in there for a very long They're demolishing a lot of space in the basement to open up space for a community room. The building has never had a common room anywhere in the whole building for anybody to ever convene or meet and have any kind of conversations or a meeting. They're going to build a community center and put in program, have programming and a director there for the, to run programs for the children who live in the building. Mr. Orlovsky was telling me that on every floor, they're going to have four infrared cameras that will be panning twenty-four hours a day, every floor, and that those, he has, he's experienced in the security business. This is a level of security that they've never had before. They're going to have lots of security precautions installed at the entrance. They've already gutted the whole lobby and the management office and are refurbishing that. The building has never had any furniture in it, in the lobby. It's all just sort of a bare bones place, a little bit, not unlike if you were walking into a prison, not a single chair in sight. And so they're going to be furnishing that and making it really attractive with new lighting and all kinds of stuff. There'll be an onsite manager, an onsite assistant manager, an onsite maintenance person, and all kinds of electronics to manage, to keep track of when, who opens which doors to which units on which, at which hours, so that anytime any repairs or maintenance is done, or any unit has to be entered by anybody for any reason, there'll be a documented proof of that that's computerized. So the level of care and that's going on there is going to be able to treat this building as, just as well as any luxury housing you might find in the area. So they're very interested in the Orlo Fund. Mr. Orlovsky said he's very interested in finding other large buildings in the Tacoma Park area. They're interested in investing here, and one of the reasons they did invest in that building, and buy a building that's pretty, pretty much gone to the dogs, is because of the Purple Line. And they saw that this was going to be a long-term valuable investment. So it was, it was absolutely thrilling to talk to somebody who had more than a profit motive for wanting to buy this building. Not that there's anything wrong with a profit motive, but this person, what they're trying to do is really enhance the quality of life of this building, and it's going to set a fine example throughout the city. And I'm really excited about it. And I wanted to share, wanted to share that news. And meanwhile, at the same time, Hampshire, excuse me, Hillwood Manor Garden Apartments project, the residents there have voted to accept Montgomery Housing Partnership's bid to, to buy the project from the current owners. And that's a ninety-six unit garden apartment project that was built, I guess, in the nineteen forties. That has been poorly maintained for many years. And I won't go into the details about some of the difficulties there, but Montgomery Housing Partnership is pledging to renovate that project, building by building. So the tenants there are finally getting some attention that it's been long, long overdue. So this is a sign of, I think, of times where the economy is starting to turn around locally, and developers, property owners are seeing that it makes sense to invest and improve for the long term. And that because they, they literally, they're not going to be, they're not doing this a hundred percent out of altruism, they're doing it because they realize that improving these residential properties is going to redound to their economic benefit in the future. And that's a fabulous sign for the health of our community. And so hopefully, we'll see more of this, this kind of investment going on in the city. I just wanted to mention those two things. There's some other things I'll mention, but I'm going to pause right now and give somebody else a chance to say something.
I've just got a couple of things to mention. Others have mentioned the one hundred and twenty-fifth events. I just want to reinforce that Saturday, April eighteenth, the event here is at seven thirty, and it should be a nice program, recognizing the city's one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. And I would encourage the public and my colleagues on the council to come to that event. And colleagues on the council, I should have gotten an invitation with an RSVP attached, so it would be good to get those RSVPs. The Montgomery chapter of the Maryland Municipal League actually has two meetings in April. The first one is the regular meeting on Thursday, the sixteenth, in Latinsville, but the second one is Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, and that's the delayed meeting with the county executive in Rockville. And a reminder to everybody that Saturday and Sunday, April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, is Art Hop in Old Town and Tacoma Junction. Any other council comments? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank Brendan Johns and Bruce Baker of Cheer for giving me the opportunity to speak to the kids of the Youth Collaborative this past week. Kids are very excited about finding jobs this summer. They had a lot of great questions, and I hope that the community can help them not just find jobs, but place them in a college track, because a lot of these kids have the potential to be leaders in our community. So thank you, Brandon.
Councilmember Schultz, you had one additional one?
Yeah, one additional thing is I forgot to mention that last Saturday, on the twenty-eighth, we had our first Ward Six Play Day, thanks to Pat Rumball, the Play Lady, the famous Play Lady in Tacoma Park, and a crew of her volunteers. This was on Merwood Avenue, and it was bitter cold that day, I can tell you. But it was not snowing, and it was not raining, so we learned to be grateful for small things. But it was the first one, and it was successful, but like the first time you do anything, it was probably not as well-attended as it should have been or could have been, notwithstanding the weather. I'm hopeful that somehow or another, we can help the Play Lady and this Play Tacoma Plays effort to become more frequent, so that maybe we can do this twice, twice a year and very, in the war, each ward. That'd be great. I don't know where the funding, how, there's a lot of logistical problems that have to be solved in order to do that. But I just wanted to have a shout-out for the, for the success of that program. It was really great to see kids out on the street, playing in the street where they belong, instead of sitting in their homes behind curtains and fooling around with their electronics. They were, you know, it closed off the street, and kids were having a lot of fun, and so were the grown-ups. Thanks.
Okay, city managers' comments?
No comments.
Okay. Legislative update.
I talked to the city's legislative advocate just before the meeting, and obviously, there's one more week left, and things are churning around, and a lot of things aren't yet settled. The, this, sorry, let me open a document on my computer. Okay, the Stormwater Bill, SB eight sixty-three, the, may have an impact on the city of Tacoma Park in that it may end up, if it, if it ends up this way, exempting veterans organizations, so the VFW would be exempt from our stormwater fee, and apparently will provide opportunities for nonprofits to file for hardship exemptions. So that may also have an impact on our stormwater fees, so watching that. The city's alcohol bill, the mayor testified at a hearing last week, was it last week? Week before?
Week, like a week and a half ago.
Right, right, a week and a half, on the twenty-seventh. No?
Whatever day it was.
Whatever day it was, right, right. And although nothing has happened at this point, we're assured that it's going to be, move through and be voted on. So we have some confidence on that. Yeah, body camera legislation may not happen. And there's one personal property tax bill that may exempt the first ten thousand dollars of personal property for small businesses, and that's all that I have.
So why isn't the body cam bill not going?
I think there's been a lot of negotiations of back and forth between the certain advocates and legislators.
Part of the problem is none of the bills are any good. That's simply put.
Chief, why don't you just tell it like it is?
Okay, no, that's okay. The bills are all over the place. Some of the bills would require officers that arrive on the scene to ask permission from everyone in the house to record, and then the next officer would have to ask the next one if somebody object, it, they're just poorly written. And none of them address the two-party consent rule in Maryland. So we're hoping that we'll get some decent legislation that doesn't mandate policy, that mandates, that does allow for the use of them, just like we do for in-car video that we do now. Basically, it puts us at a disadvantage, because they can record us in the house, but we can't record them, so.
Chief, could you give us a suggestion, like some legislation that you would think would be something that would work, actually on the ground, at being a police chief?
Yeah, we've, we've actually done that as, as a collective group, the Maryland Chiefs and Sheriffs. You know, there's, there are a number of agencies that are, are going to body cameras at this point. There are some that are not going to go to them. But the, having an unfunded mandate that can't be used when you need it is, is a waste of everybody's money and time. We think that they're a good thing, but we want to be able to use it the way they need to be used. And, you know, most of the elected officials are, have been informed, you know, as to what, what we're asking for, and there's not a whole lot of movement on it.
So what you're saying is Tacoma Park could have body cameras for our police under our own program?
No. Well, we can use them. We can use them to the same extent that we use the in-car video on traffic stops in certain edges and circumstances, but we can't use them for every contact, we can't use them when we're investigating a crime, we can't use it without, and there's, there's only an attorney general opinion right now as to, and it was the last attorney general, so the new attorney general has to give their opinion, but attorney generals' opinions are not binding, and they're not legal, they're not law, on whether or not we can, to the same extent that any citizen can take a video in public, whether we can take, record audio in public. The courts have held that, that they can, but it's not clear whether we can or not. And until we get some legislation that says that, it sort of limits the use. That being said, we're still, you know, moving forward with testing them and piloting it. There's Montgomery Counties in the same boat. They're, they're, they've requested some legislation, which hasn't really gone anywhere yet, but they are fielding about a hundred units as a test out of eight hundred.
So something we could move, we could put our toe in the water, at least.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I mean, we're already, we have.
You didn't have your glasses on tonight, I wasn't sure what happened.
It's here.
Okay.
It's here. We have about five cameras out there right now that we're testing and evaluating. There's additional testing to be done on, on switching over to that for the in-car video as well, but we're still moving forward with it. So we're not, we're not going to just sit back and wait till the legislation changes. We are going to move forward with, with evaluating it. And like anything else, you know, we want to see how well it works for us in Tacoma Park.
And obviously, you can bring anything to the council, needs any action we need to take.
Yeah. And actually, the biggest thing is going to be the budget, which we're going to hear about. But as far as the camera program, but the, the legislation has to be at the state level.
Okay, thank you.
So it sounds like there's, it's unlikely that there will be legislation in this year's session. And if there isn't, that means that any statewide legislation setting up guidelines or ability to do things would be delayed probably until July first of 2016.
They could try to push it through at the next session, but I mean, this is one of the, yeah, I mean, one of these, I mean, this, this is a very hot topic, obviously, nationwide. It's panacea for some people. It's not perfect. Body cameras are probably going to be very useful for us as far as evidentiary purposes, as well as complaints. I mean, in every jurisdiction where they have cameras, in ninety-nine point nine I mean, in every jurisdiction where they have cameras, in 99.9% of the time, it upholds what the officers did and what the officer saw, and it basically, you know, takes the wind out of the sails for complaints. That being said, we have to be able to use them, and I know that there's still a push to get it done, I just don't know if it's going to happen within the next week.
A question. The DC government doesn't have these problems, and they're pushing ahead to install these body cams, and so I'm wondering if that, the district government's experience, might be something that the state of Maryland can learn something from.
Well, there are probably departments in Maryland that have been using them longer than, Laurel City, for example, has been using them for about two years, but they have to limit the use to what the law allows, which is the same thing as in-car video. The problem isn't so much DC, it's Maryland has the two-party consent law on recording audio, and that's basically what it comes down to, is that you have to have the, it's a felony to record somebody without their permission under most circles, there's very few exceptions. One is police officers on traffic stops, another is the 911 system and recorded phone calls, and they have to be informed and things like that. So, Maryland has this law that's been there, it's actually a wiretap law that's been there for 40 years, and it has absolutely nothing to do with the technology that exists today, but it's there. It's a speed bump. I'm confident it's going to change, I really am, but I just don't know when.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Did my colleagues who weren't signed up get this bulletin from MML that came today that has the legislative update?
Yes.
Because some people wanted to be signed up.
I don't think I did.
I'll pass it down, just as information, if you want to remember to sign up for that.
It does, it does mention that the amendments to the municipal officials' ethics legislation that the MML was proposing has been withdrawn, basically failed this time around.
Right, so it's doubtful it's going anywhere.
Right.
And it's not anything that we were particularly concerned about, we've been complying with the law as written, and haven't seemed to have a problem with it.
And as a reminder, we have to update our financial reporting by the end of the month.
Everyone did get the email with the form.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on legislative update? All right, then, we'll move to adoption of minutes. We have two sets of minutes this evening, from February 2nd on February 9th, would somebody like to move adoption?
Moved second.
Moved by Councilmember Grimes, second by Councilmember Schultz. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously, and I provided my one small edit to the clerk. Next is the work session item, which is a discussion of the proposed zoning text amendment 1504 concerning educational institutions, exemptions, and standards. And if I can just say a couple of words before Mr. Ohsburg introduces this, in terms of putting this on the city council agenda and the information that we got, I just want to remind folks that this was submitted to the county, the county council took it up only to schedule the public hearing, so this is the beginning of their process, where they've scheduled the public hearing, and then after the public hearing, it would get referred to park and planning for the process, so this is basically the beginning of their process, and as soon as we found out about it, we put it on the agenda.
How did we find out about it?
Actually, I met with Dr. Spence and Mr. Farley two weeks ago, and it was brought up at that time. That's when I heard about it.
So, no one in city staff? No one else know about it?
We weren't aware that that was applicable, that's right.
I would think more particularly, no one in the county council informed us about a request that originated within our borders.
That's correct.
And the same thing happened, I'm sorry, quickly, Dever, the same thing happened with the zoning text amendment last June that revised, that was aimed at revising the zoning around the Presbyterian Church, no one from the county council informed the city in that case either.
So, it's an issue where we need to make sure that there's a process where the county council informs city councils who have, who are under park and planning, and the biggest one in the county is us, about these types of things.
On the other hand, I mean, I think that we also have the obligation of particularly paying attention to any proposed text amendments that we see on the various agendas, because I think that's one of those, it is one of those things that can sometimes slip under, and we should not miss it.
Right. So, with that.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Eric Ohsburg, city planner, and I'm here to discuss the zoning text amendment 1504, which deals with private educational institutions, which is, was introduced at county council last month. So, I think probably what makes the most sense is to just sort of briefly go over the zoning text amendment and explain how it might more generally apply to the city, and then maybe discuss the building in more detail that was discussed earlier at Washington and Venice University, because it's sort of two different, two different things. There's the zoning text amendment as it applies to the city, and then I think there's the issue of this particular project. So, as it was sort of briefly discussed earlier, the zoning text amendment applies specifically to a use, not a particular zone, it applies just to a use. That use is private educational institutions, which is permitted use in some zones, or what's called a conditional use in many other zones, including many residential zones. Typically, for that use to be granted, it would have to go through a hearing process, but this particular zoning text amendment deals with those groups that are exempt from having to go through that particular hearing process or through site plan review. Those groups are listed, and it was discussed earlier tonight, in particular parochial schools on properties that are owned or leased by religious organizations, as well as basically any government, state, county, or city, or federal-owned property as well. So, the exemption essentially, yeah, sure.
Can I just stop you there? Because you just confused me.
Okay.
My understanding that this concern is concerns private institutions, and then you just said it, the exemption talks about, I thought I heard you say exempting any state agency, county, or municipal.
Private institutions that operate on those properties.
Somebody could lease, could lease some space from a publicly-owned institute land.
Correct.
And the zoning.
So, it would be publicly-owned but privately operated.
Operated.
That's one of the options, and that's one of the various.
Because I, because I think that can, that point right there can provide a lot of misunderstanding as to the applicability of this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
But with that in mind, because it is the use in particular, it could, it also applies to, it essentially could apply to any, any property in Montgomery County. Many of the, many private educational institutions operate in residential, residentially-zoned parts of the county. So, the map that was in the packet, which is on the screen, I'll describe in a moment, is sort of a snapshot of what exists in the city right now in terms of the applicability of the zoning text amendment, but that's really just, it's a dynamic situation that could change.
And, sorry for the interruption again, but I want to make sure that we understand the definition that starts in line eight of the zoning text amendment, where it talks about the private institution includes various things that are uses that might not necessarily be thought of as educational, because it talks about art programs, artistic performances, indoor and outdoor recreation programs, summer day camps, so that it's a lot of these uses that kind of maybe expand beyond the, maybe the traditional sense of educational building?
Right. It's fairly permissive, I think, as far as the definition of what a private educational institution could be, so something like a private daycare, or a private recreational or artistic school, or educational facility could.
So, it could be for a, a kind of a separate, like a gym, or an art, I don't know, gallery, that is operated in conjunction with a private educational institution, and owned by either, the property's either owned, publicly-owned or privately-owned by the educational institution?
I couldn't answer that specifically, but I think there is some discretion in probably the application of that, of that use. One thing to point out, though, is just the point of the exemption. The exemption specifically applies to sort of that group we discussed earlier, private educational institution or parochial school on land that's either owned or leased by a religious organization, and then the various government organizations. Something that doesn't fit that category would still have to go, would not be subject to the exemption, so they would still have to go through a hearing to evaluate whether or not that use is applicable there, or they may have to go through a site plan review process.
If I can try to clarify it, so I think that the point that we're focusing on this is that those uses that don't go, actually are not allowed to go through site plan or conditional use are religious-related institutions, and so, or uses, and so that's, that's kind of.
Is it just religious-related institutions?
That's my understanding for that, for that exception, from having to go through the various conditional use process.
Right, because the reality is, any project or development on any of those government entities would have to go through a separate mandatory referral process.
Right.
That would be subject to the planning board's review or other discretionary planning approvals. But I think the real issue here, as the city manager mentioned, is that in particular, religious private educational institutions are essentially exempt from many of those other development approval and review processes. It's not atypical, it's fairly common, there's sort of a legal precedent for that.
And what's the standard now?
Standard now is that they are exempt.
But they have to comply with the zoning.
Right.
Right.
They're exempt, but they have to comply with the zoning that they're in. In the particular case of the Washington Venice University Building, they're in an R-60 zone, which has defined setbacks and height restrictions, and while they don't need to go through a site plan review process, or a hearing process to build their building, they do need to get a building permit, and in order to get their building permit, they need to show that they're within that building envelope, the same way a residential homeowner would have to show that they're within that sort of, within those setbacks in height.
And in this case, the adjacent property of the hospital is in that same R-60 zone, and would have to do something to be able to build higher?
Right, they're in a different case because of their use, and because they are operating there under special exception, I believe.
Yeah, they have a different category.
But the zoning is the same, and their special exception, or their, whatever process they would go through, would be what would address, in this case, the height.
No, it's a different thing.
Totally different, even though the zoning is the same?
Even though the zoning is the same, hospitals don't fall into the same category of being exempt from the special exception processes. There's a special thing that says hospitals have to go through, get a hospital's special exception.
Their own process.
That's right.
And it's also that the use is separate, this only, the exemption only applies to this educational use.
But if the university wants to use the property at the hospital, they could use that by right, and would not have to go through any type of approval process, or?
You know, that's a whole different case, I need to, I would want to have some investigation, some legal investigation of that.
Right, there, it gets a little complicated, and I'm not a licensed attorney, and so I wouldn't want to necessarily say one thing or the other, but the real, I think the real issue here is that what is really being presented in the zoning text amendment is that, right now, an organization like the Washington Venice University can build a building with their, just by getting their building permit, and that's how it works across the county, but they're confined to fit within the limitations of the zone that they're in, in terms of the height and the setbacks, which are non-discretionary, they're very black and white. And what's being proposed here is raising, raising the height limit, in particular, up to 65 feet from 35 feet, which it is right now.
And so, I'm sorry, that would mean that there are other buildings on the campus, they could automatically, if this went forward, those buildings could become 65-foot?
Right, if this were approved, then they could apply for a building permit and build a building up to 65 feet anywhere on the Washington Venice University campus, and on the map that was included in the packet, and I put up here, is just a sort of a first level look at some of the other areas in the city that this could apply today. The blue areas are either owned or operated by religious institutions, the little yellow stars are where there are, where this educational, private educational use is currently in effect, so where there are other cases where they have a school, or some kind of educational use on those properties. The green areas are the, sort of the government category of areas that are owned by either county or city government, in this case, we have no state or federal government land in the city. So, that's just sort of a broad level overview of ownership.
I notice you don't have the Presbyterian Church with a star on it, why is that?
The, this was, the, what is starred has been just a preliminary analysis by Montgomery County that identified over 300 buildings or properties in the county that would fall into that category. They may be under a different use, I don't know if they're under this one, or possibly a different one, like daycare or something like that.
The Tacoma Park Cooperative Nursery is not on the list, but that is a private school on Flower Avenue and a house, so if this text amendment went forward, then they could technically.
Not unless they were a religious organization.
Okay.
I don't know if they, if they define themselves in that way.
Okay.
And the, among the ones that aren't starred are the Mortoma Church at Jackson and Ethan Allen, and maybe that's because they don't have an educational use currently, it's just a church?
Correct. There's a few others, there's smaller, there's one on Holton Lane, it's a church, and there's the Seventh-day Adventist Church in Old Town, where the farmer's market is, and the Presbyterian Church as well, so there's a few others. This is a cursory look at the city, without getting too much into the complications of hypotheticals.
Well, but the hypotheticals are what concerns us.
Right.
And has to, because it's all there is at this point. The Zion's Lutheran Church, which is on New Hampshire Avenue, that has a small daycare center on the basement level, down near where the commercial kitchen is, that runs Meals on Wheels. I've spent in that, it's a nice little daycare, they probably got about 20, 30 kids. So, that is an educational institution, according to this text amendment, which then sort of opens up a Pandora's Box of possibilities, because the lot there is fairly substantial in length and all of that, unlike, say, the, some of these other locations. I mean, to me, that just sort of breaches the whole concept of absurdity. But let me pose another hypothetical. Suppose Kaplan School, which does, you know, college entrance exams, buys a property, that's a private education, that's what fits the definition of a private educational institution. It's not religious, and I'm not sure I understand why something needs to be religious before it gets to be 65 feet, when, if it's just a private school, non-religious, like Kaplan, let's say, that's well-known, used to be owned by the Washington Post, would, why they wouldn't also be able to build to 65 feet under this text amendment?
They would be able to build up to 65 feet, but they would have to go through a hearing process in order to do that.
There's discretion, there's a, basically, there would be a determination made by the planning board. planning board or by whichever entity hears that conditional use on whether it should be approved or not. But for religious education, but for religiously affiliated education uses, there's not a hearing process.
You know, this, there's a certain irony here, because we got the federal relupa law that was approved in the 1990s to make sure that churches and religious institutions weren't discriminated against in the United States and prevented to be able to develop their property in the same way that secular institutions could. But this seems to take it and flip it upside down so that religious schools and other entities, daycare centers for gracious sakes, get to have an advantage because they're religious. And I don't want to sound like a Supreme Court justice up here and be, sound absurd, but I'm just trying to understand what the dimensions are, what we're talking about here.
I think from, I did speak to the attorney for the university this afternoon. He made a point that the institution does not have an option to go for a variance, that the way, that the, whereas somebody else would have an option to go for a variance. I have not checked that out, exactly what the, what the legal parameters are of that. Nevertheless, I think that it's clear that the language that's before you is very broad, affects many people. It's hard to figure out. And while I think a number of us have some sympathy for wanting to deal with a particular building, the, this approach is fairly significant countywide. One of the things that we have had some discussion about is maybe there's some other kind of language that might be more appropriate that would talk about, as we have situations where you've got residential properties across the street, you know, what are the setbacks, what are the height setbacks that are allowable? You know, there may be some, some other kind of language. We have not had time to explore the options for that or have that discussion.
No, I understand. None of us have.
Right.
Well, I just want to mention that I'm not sure there is a religious hook here in what they're providing, because it says, unless a greater building height is allowed by the zone, the maximum building height for any private educational institution is 65 feet without regard to, to other height limitations in this chapter. I'm not sure this is just limited to religious.
It's not limited to just religious organizations. The religious organizations are just exempt from the approval process, discretionary approval process.
I'm curious if the university's attorney, or maybe Mr. Farley, or Dr. Spence can answer, why didn't they go for a zoning map amendment rather than a zoning text amendment?
I think that's generally a bigger issue. It can be common-
Well, it's also a very, much smaller issue.
Well, I mean, that's right. But I think that it goes to the issue of spot zoning. And so then there may be an identification, you know, a determination that it's not appropriate for spot zoning.
If it's not appropriate for spot zoning, it's not appropriate for the building that would be allowed by that spot zoning regardless of the mechanism.
That's what, I mean, in normal situations, that's why you have variances.
So if it's not eligible for a variance, who determined that it wasn't eligible for a variance? Or who made that recommendation that a variance would not be granted? Or I should say, who, not a recommendation, who made the, offered the opinion that a variance would not be granted here? And on what basis?
Our attorney is Robert Brewer from Lurch Early and Brewer. He's a gentleman that made that recommendation. You know, I asked the same question in our planning about a variance, would it be possible? And so the consensus, he's my legal counsel, so I haven't gone to a second counsel for a second opinion or anything like that. But he told us that this is the way to go when it came to this. And when he said, he told us it wouldn't be, we couldn't do a variance. We would have to go this direction. So we've proceeded with that. Now, a year and a half ago, we've reached out to the city to talk to various city leaders, the city manager at the time, and other folks about the building, because we didn't want to put a building up that would, you know, irritate the neighborhood or anything like that. We asked the neighbors in the neighborhood to come. We had a number of meetings to ask their opinions about the building, what their thoughts would be and so forth. But as far as the zoning pieces, our legal counsel didn't give me a rationale beyond what I just said, so.
And I just got that statement this afternoon, so I've not had an opportunity to confirm-
And I'm not attorney, so I don't-
I'll direct an aside to the city manager. It's something that came up in a different sort of setting very recently, which is when there is an issue, especially regarding zoning, that is going to come eventually before the council, then it would be good to involve the whole council early on. So that's a request for the future.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is very new, and that's why I asked that it come before you.
Well, Mr. Farley indicated that there were discussions with city staff a year and a half ago-
There certainly were discussions about the idea of the building. We've not had a discussion before that there was an issue related to zoning or that there would be any, for any kind of amendment.
All right, fine.
There's a public hearing on April 14th. The county is holding.
That's why we're talking about this.
That's pretty important.
There's a, there's a public hearing on the 14th. It's a legislative issue, so the public record will be open for the extent of that period beyond the 14th. But it, as it was mentioned earlier, it will still have to go to the Fed Committee, the Montgomery County Planning Department, the planning board will have an opportunity to make a recommendation to the county council. And they will eventually deliberate on it as well. So there's a fair bit of time ahead of us. An additional comment probably from other parts of the county on this as it affects the whole county.
Right. And we're talking about it in work session tonight so that we can provide direction to staff for the resolution that we want to pass next Monday night to have available for the public hearing on Tuesday, the 14th.
Aside from-
Let me go to Councilmember Siemens. He's been wanting to say something.
Thank you. First of all, I strongly support the plans that's presented tonight for the new building at the Washington Venice University. I think from what we've heard tonight, there's a great reluctance to support this amendment. And so I think this council should direct the city manager to investigate what alternatives may be available with Ms. Florine and with the Washington Venice University attorney and with Park and Planning, and see what we can come up with in the short amount of time we have left so that we can craft that resolution. But I'd like to just move forward with that. I think that's what I'm hearing everyone say at this point.
Well, but I think, I think we also need to convey the message that as much as we may support what they're trying to do and we want to look for alternatives, we think the proposed zoning text amendment is a horrible idea-
Yes.
...and its countywide applicability would be devastating for a lot of communities. And I'll point to the time, I don't know how long ago, when we had an opportunity to weigh in on the proposed zoning text amendment for commercial kitchens, and we chose not to. And I don't think that worked out very well for us.
No.
You say it much more eloquently than what you're saying, Mayor.
I disagree with you.
But we at least need to recognize that this is an opportunity that we should be aware of and take if we so choose.
Mayor, I like the way that you are leading us on this issue, and I think that's the best way to go. I would ask that our resolution, which seems we're moving that way, address only the ZTA. And while, we could also ask the city manager to investigate alternatives. I wouldn't want to see any endorsement of the current proposal in that resolution.
But I would like to say to the city manager that my constituents are not going to accept anything in the 60, 50-foot range of a building across the street from them.
And I'll point out that what we're dealing with here on Maplewood is a fairly good hill, whereas buildings step up the hill, you know, they, their height above the street is potentially relatively the same. But if you just start talking about, well, it's as tall as the building next to it, depends on whether it's uphill or downhill. And the one that's on the drawing is downhill, and the one that's taller is uphill. And it may be that, you know, there's something that can be worked out that kind of steps it back. Does that makes it relate to that other building? I don't know. But it's not always just the height as measured. And the county has spent a lot of time dealing with, how do you measure the height of a 35-foot building? And how does it relate to the street and all of those things?
It's the median of the top and bottom grade, something, take an average.
But there were many months of discussion about that some years ago.
Oh, yeah.
I want to sort of say that I'm not wanting at all to deal with the merits of what the university wants to do, other than to say, we want you to be able to build it, have the facility that you need. And having just gotten this, and having had a chance to read it, I think it would be unfair, not just to me, but to you, to the university, for me to be opining on the merits of the actual structure that you're talking about. That's for another time. I think what we need to focus on tonight, which we've been talking about, is this proposed text amendment. And what I would just say is that this county zoning ordinance is a man-made ordinance that was written by humans with texts and certain conditions. And so it can be amended to get to do whatever we want to do. It's not to criticize Mr. Brewer of Lurch Early and Brewer, which is one of the very highly regarded land use, a firm with regard to land use law and all of that. I know the attorneys over there, a lot of them, very well. So you're getting good advice. No, not worried about that. But that advice is written, is given in the context of the existing zoning ordinance. And somewhere or another, a university such as our, the Washington Adventist University, has to have a way to be able to add a building to its campus without threatening the entire county. Like, so we need to find a way to wordsmith the, a zoning text amendment somewhere in the zoning ordinance, even though it's a brand-new ordinance, with, without, this way is just like using a sledgehammer to hang a little postcard on a wall. I mean, this building is a very, you know, contextually is a small building, maybe too high for the folks on Maplewood. I don't know. I'm in no position to judge that, and I'm not going to tonight. But I just think that, right now, this is just out of the question. Can't, can't support this.
And my reaction when there was discussion, I think in response to Councilmember Grimes' question, that doing something would be spot zoning and you don't want to do spot zoning, my reaction was, this is spot zoning grown huge to apply to the whole county. And that's-
Getting spots all over the county.
Yeah. The spot, the spot is countywide, except for the places that have their own zoning authority.
If I might, I mean, it sounds like you're suggesting a resolution in opposition to the zoning text amendment with an effort to find out more information, both about the legal decision, legal statements that were made, and also what other options might be available.
I would say-
I don't care about other options. I mean, I think we should submit a resolution saying that we oppose it.
Yeah, on reflection, I think I'd rather stick to the one issue, which is the ZTA, especially noting that two of our colleagues are not here this evening.
Is that good?
I think so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm with that. Just playing a bows.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll continue, obviously-
We'll have more opportunity to work on this.
...to communicate closely with the university to advance your needs.
I go back, though, to what the mayor has instructed us in the past, which is, opposition is accepted much less graciously than acceptance with changes. And so I think it's important that we at least see if there are some changes that could make this acceptable.
The ZTA.
Yeah.
And if nobody's identified, I think that could be made.
Well, that's why I've asked the city manager to talk with Ms. Florine and with the city, the Washington Venice University attorney, and with Park and Planning to see if there are alternatives that could make this.
Mr. Farley and Dr. Spence already expressed that since the building that they're proposing is 14 feet below the 65-foot limit of the ZTA, they would explore reducing the ZTA limit from 65 feet to something lower. But that would not change my statement about our opposition to the ZTA.
Yeah, I mean, if the building is only going to be 35 feet tall, we'd still be opposed to the ZTA, because it's nothing to do with the building. It has to do with the ZTA, which is just crazy to do that.
But I think that the sense that we convey, and it doesn't have to be in the resolution opposing the ZTA, it can be in some additional communication that goes along with it to these various entities that said, say, we're happy to help look for a solution that will fit what needs to be done here. It's just that this tool is the wrong tool.
The ZTA is the wrong tool. For, I think for the purposes of next Monday, we'll prepare a resolution that opposes the ZTA. I do not think that there will be enough time to get a lot of language. If I learn something that's very important, I will share that with you as I get it. But I think that there will be quite a long discussion ahead. Things don't stop on Monday-
Right.
-about this. And, you know, it brings up the other issue, too, which is that, and this is just my personal belief, that I believe that religious entities should be subject to site plan. That's my personal preference, so that there's full discussion of these kinds of impacts on communities, recognizing that they're part of our community. Nevertheless, that's not the legal determination for Montgomery County. And so I think we'll look and see what options there are, but I may not have options on Monday.
Right. And if I can just point out that this is in the context of the Fed Committee of the county council dealing with other places, including White Flint, where they're having to deal with the zoning code as rewritten very recently, which took a whole bunch of zones and got rid of them to try and simplify down to many fewer zones. And they're now kind of having to start of kind of wiggle around going, well, gee, maybe we have too few here, and maybe we need to start expanding it again. So they're, they're dealing with that. And this, this kind of goes into the hopper of that context. Thank you all very much, and we'll continue to work on this. All right. Let's take a very short break, and we'll come back for our, for our last item, which is a presentation of the city manager on the FY16 budget.
Thank you. I'm going to go through kind of how I got to the proposed budget, to give some background as we go forward over the next few weeks. As I've communicated in my transmittal message and other information to you and in the newsletter, we have a very tight budget. And because it's a very tight budget, and we needed to manage to pay for ongoing expenses with ongoing revenue, I'm proposing a two-cent tax rate increase, going from 57 cents to 59 cents per $100 valuation. With that, we'll continue with high service levels that we give the citizens. We will do a three-year phase-in of salary increases of staff. We will provide enhanced sustainability initiatives. And the thing that I'm happiest about is that it does position us for the future on things that I think are really important related to economic development and investment in those things that last a long time, our facilities and our city infrastructure. And so here's the, here's the numbers. Basically, we have a general fund that increases by 3.7% from that was, which was adopted for FY50. for FY15, and our expenditures increased 3.1%. The other funds are for very special purposes. Altogether, the total budget would have a revenue of $27.5 million and expenditures of $29.6 million. One of the things that I want to call your attention to is the magic number, which is the general fund, unreserved fund balance at the end of FY16 is $3,051,000.
Uh-oh.
That is as close to $3 million, and that was only because I was able to do lots of restrictions on what could be included in this budget, because when I got the first numbers, I almost had a heart attack. And so I kept this very much to the amount that we need for cash flow. Yes?
So will the $3 million figure or above be maintained throughout the course of the fiscal year, based on the arrival date of different revenues and the expenditure dates?
No, the $3,051,000, the way that it's calculated is at the, is as of June 30. So it varies. We use the guiding principles that were used from last year, and were identified in the council discussions, economic development, environmental sustainability, quality of life, which my father, who was very much of a grammarian, would say, high quality of life, quality of life doesn't say what kind of quality. We want a high quality of life, and fiscal prudence. Under economic development, we would continue what we will be starting this year, which is use of specialized legal counsel, especially related to Tacoma Junction activities. I have put in, as a placeholder, a management position in the city manager's office, partly to facilitate economic development activities. And it's something that, as this budget was put together while I was acting, I did not know what would be needed and what combination of people or skills would be needed. And I wanted to ensure that there was some recognition that we would need to look at staffing to make sure that economic development activities are promoted. We've got a fairly extensive program, project at the intersection of Ethan Allen and New Hampshire Avenue, for which general fund monies are needed in FY16. And a small amount of money is being proposed for the first step of a boundary survey. And what this has to do, the city boundary sometimes is, I would stand by and say that's where the boundary is, and other times I would not assert that we know where the boundary is. Since the city's boundary tends to be along commercial areas, when there's commercial redevelopment, if there's calculations such as FARs, if there's calculations about what happens in Montgomery County versus Prince George's County, or if there's other kinds of grant-related restrictions, knowing where the city line is could be very important. It's been an issue, it's been something that I've wanted to see for a long time, but it may be something that actually functions as an incentive for a particular project that we could assess with the boundary survey for that segment. That's something for us to look at a little bit more closely, but I wanted to put that in as an incentive.
Is part of the area that you're concerned with, the border with Prince George's?
Yes.
Because I thought that that was all done for unification.
Yes, and which I was very active in, and I can tell you that we do not know exactly where that boundary is, which is why the definition of the city of Tacoma Park, I mean, of the boundary of Montgomery County, is the city of Tacoma Park boundary. It does not have a meets and bounds description.
Well, there's a special problem of where, at East West Highway, where it cuts across to Larch. So I know from looking at them out there myself.
It could be in a different location, but we do not, and that was something that we actually had investigated at the time and did not come to a final determination. So we left it where the map showed it, not necessarily that we're confident that that's where the line should be.
I just thought, I remember that there was a desire on the part of the city manager at the time to make sure that the boundary was such that all of the right-of-way was included in Prince George's.
Nevertheless, I will say that there's uncertainty.
Okay.
One of the other guiding principles is environmental sustainability, and this is one of the few areas that we're doing some minimal expansion of expenses for FY16. There's lots of activity related to the reduction of energy use that would go towards, helps go towards the Georgetown University Energy Prize contest, but really does provide, I think, benefits for residents. We would be bringing food waste collection in-house, not have it as a pilot project, not have it as a partly contracted project. That does require adding one FTE for sanitation collection person. The amount of difference in terms of cost is very small, but it would be a continuing The, and then, of course, our many stormwater infrastructure projects, which help advance clean water in the Anacostia watershed and the Chesapeake Bay. And I, my fiscal prudence one disappeared. We have quite a lot about fiscal prudence. I mean, obviously, one of the things that we're very careful about is putting ongoing revenue with ongoing expenses and paying for other things with grants and that kind of thing. So I wanted to go through kind of how did I come up with the budget that's before you? And you've got the budget process that many of you are very familiar with, with the retreats that you've attended on strategic plan, on budget, the department roundtables that were before you. Staff goes through and identifies through this process, what new trends do they see? What kind of opportunities might there be? Are there some grant opportunities? Are there some things that would be a better approach? And so they come with a list of those kinds of ideas. We discuss them in a variety of different staff meetings, and then I had individual meetings with each of you. As that's going on, we analyze the projected revenues, and I'm going to go through this in just a moment about some of the detail related to that. Alexis Blackwell goes through and enters into our computer spreadsheet, projected personnel costs. And this is a fairly significant, huge undertaking that affects each department. She goes through for every position and calculates benefits, and that whole bit of information gets distributed to the various department heads that are working on their individual departments. The department heads also go through and look at the cost of goods and services, you know? We've had a fortune that price of gas has gone down, that's a good thing. Usually, it's how much has increased of the various expenses that we have on a daily basis, and any special, cost of any kind of special projects and initiatives. We also go through the details of the equipment replacement reserve. Are these things still, that should still be on it? We have some discussion about the facility maintenance reserve, although that's an area that I think needs some more thought. And we identify fund-specific activities, like special revenue funds, what could come, be used with speed camera revenue, and how do we use the stormwater fund.
Just before you leave that slide, is there anything additional you want to say about the entry of the personnel costs in terms of the assumptions that were made, since we don't necessarily have agreement on wages for the current fiscal year?
We, I think we're pretty close to where we think we will be with those discussions, but it's very close to only what we can afford. And I think that that's one of the things that goes through this.
So there were certain assumptions made in terms of what was put in?
That's correct.
For accounting for potential costs for this year that aren't certain yet?
That's right.
Okay.
One of the things that we try to look at for each year is $500,000 for street repair. This was after many years where we didn't put enough in for street repair. $500,000 for new sidewalks, $500,000 for ADA-related improvements. If you look at the out-years on the CIP, you'll see those numbers on the out-years of CIP. And we go through our capital budget for the full five years. And we refine those numbers as we look at them, and then we start to, we go back through the goals that the council has set, and the needs that we have, and we make some hard decisions. And this is what we come up with. First of all, we go through a revenue analysis, as I mentioned. And basically, 89% of our revenue just comes from these sources: real property tax, income tax, and intergovernmental payments for the general fund revenue. At this point, we've got half of the, half of the revenue comes from the real property tax, more than a quarter from the central governmental payments, which tend to be the police rebate and the other rebates that we get, and then income tax, which is limited by the state law to the 17% of what would otherwise go to the county. So I want to go through, for intergovernmental payments, essentially no change in FY16. I think the number goes down just a tiny bit, but it's been flat. Income tax was very interesting this year, and this is always an area where you kind of feel like a seer, or you try to forecast what to do with income tax payments. We go through, we get, I think, eight different payments over the course of a year. And as, and they, sometimes they're huge amounts, and sometimes they're very small amounts. And you don't get most of the big amounts until after you've made your predictions for FY16. Just the nature of when those funds come in is after the budgeting process takes place. However, in looking at these, at the way the monies were coming in for currently, for FY15, and for looking at how I think our residents are doing, just economically, I predict some income growth, both for what we're going to be receiving in FY15 and what I think we should get in FY16. And so I'm expecting about $425,000 more for FY16 than we had budgeted for FY15. I've also looked at some of the projections made by other municipalities, especially kind of in this area, like in Green Belt and that areas that aren't where you get lots of capital gains monies. And I, the same kind of modest increase is being reflected there. I think it's a fair estimate to put this before us. For property tax, that's also a bit of a prediction, but that prediction's made by the state. And the state sends out on, about on Valentine's Day, what I always hope is a love letter, and it was not. The two times I've been acting, preparing a budget, we've had a decline in the assessable base. And this year, the net assessable base declined slightly. It will cost half a cent tax rate increase just to equal the property tax revenue from You know, but I want to let the residents know that the property tax assessments are done every three years. They cover a third of the state at a time. Most larger communities get split into thirds, so they don't have a major change each year, but all of Tacoma Park is in one assessment zone. Our last assessment was done at the end of 2012, beginning of 2013. That covers FY14, FY15, and the upcoming FY16. It was done at a, with a lower property value, so it affects current revenue.
What's the likelihood if we ask the state to split the city into two?
I don't know. It's an interesting, they'd probably say no, because it'll be an awful lot of work dealing with the different residents, but I would love to have a little bit more diversity in the, in the tax assessment cycle for Tacoma Park. I've looked a little bit at what we might face with the next assessment cycle, because one of the things that I wanted to really look at was, if we're looking at salary increases, what's the likelihood that we would get adequate revenue from future, from the next round of assessments for the city of Tacoma Park? I think property values are rebounding and increasing from anecdotally that, what I've seen around town. The Washington Post reported in a recent real estate section that the February 2015 median home price in the DC area was the highest level since 2007, and for 20912, the median sales price had increased. 2013, the median sales price was $447,000, and the next year it was $494,000. However, when we look at property tax assessments, it's not just by home sales, it's by investment in homes and investment in property. And when I've spoken with the representative for the State Assessment Office, who studies Tacoma Park, she mentioned that there's an awful lot of people who have taken out building permits to do improvements on their homes, with the anticipation that the property value of those homes will be increasing. And so her anticipation is that the assessments will go up fairly significantly. There's a 10% cap each year on how much your property tax can increase if you are an owner-occupied, if you're living in an owner-occupied, single-family home, and you've been there for more than a year. Commercial property does not have the cap. Brand-new homeowners don't have the cap. For that reason, often, we can still have an increase, like last year for FY15, there was a slight increase in the assessable base, because there was enough offsetting new purchases or commercial assessment increases that it went up just slightly. The, the other thing that was interesting in talking with the person from the State Assessment Office, is kind of what can we expect for FY17? And the statement was that generally, in that first year of a cycle, there's a lot more people who receive the tax credits, because they've got a bigger increase in their property value, but they're not able to afford to deal with that increase. And also, and so many people also hit that 10% cap, and I think we can anticipate seeing that. I mentioned briefly the compensation.
May I ask about property taxes?
Sure.
This budget document doesn't say anything about personal property tax rates.
Only that, yes, I've not changed, I've kept the personal property tax rates the same.
Thanks.
The major, I guess, effect or impact affecting this year's FY16 budget is the effort to increase wages for city of Tacoma Park employees. There's been only small wage increases since 2010. In 2010, we laid off staff, we froze wages, and we've not had step increases since that time. We've had small wage increases, but not step increases. In the past five years, some positions have changed. People have, different people have different capabilities, and so they've taken on perhaps more work, so their job definition doesn't necessarily reflect what they do. And, and we know that some wages have changed a lot in the region for certain kinds of positions. So we had a study done that went through and talked to almost every employee, evaluated the positions of almost every employee, of all employees, and then compared the wages for those positions with comparable positions in municipalities that we compare ourselves with: Annapolis, Bowie, College Park, Gaithersburg, Green Belt, Hyattsville, Laurel, and Rockville. We also got information on the wages that the county offers, which generally are much higher, just as informational, that those are important when comparing with certain positions such as librarians, because there are no municipal librarians other than in Tacoma Park. What was found was that some employees were paid very low, and 15 employees in particular were paid more than 14% lower than market wage, some really quite low. And that all staff were paid somewhat low.
And before you go to the next page, can you just say a little bit more about what you mean when you say there have been no step increases? And I just want to make sure that people understand what you mean by that.
Mm-hmm.
Because we don't have the type of pay system that we used to have, where there were steps and colas. We have pay-for-performance, so if you can say how you're defining step within that context.
Generally, there's a certain amount of increase that is given when you've just started a job, and for the next couple of years, while you're getting up to speed on the job. So those tend to, those are considered step increases. With the concept that after about four years, you've basically made it to a journeyman's level of experience with that position, that does help increase wages, especially as you become more experienced. We had a, our old wage scale had the option that you went for four years, you had step increases, and then you got a, you could get extra for performance. increases, and then you got a, you could get extra for performance. That whole process went on hold in 2010. Instead, we had a very, very kind of rudimentary system where there would be a, the employment cost index for state and local employees would be applied to somebody's wage, which is generally about 1.1%. And if they were below market, we'd give them maybe an additional half percent. And then if there was a distinguished rating, they might get another, another percent to It's, it hasn't been applied well in terms of, we didn't have a good base to start on. It was a good system without having information, but once the study was done, it was clear that it was, some people were really out of whack off of that scale. And so we needed to adjust their, what their position was, kind of what the grade, the minimum and maximum wage should be for that position, and, and compare it to, with somebody with five years' experience in this kind of position, what kind of wage should they expect, recognizing that there's also, and we wanted to continue to value the pay for performance, that we wanted to continue to value distinguished work. And so I think we ended up with a, with a good system when we're all there. But what we also found out was that it was expensive to bring us up to the speed. And it was not something, especially with the property assessment base that we have, that we could do all at once. And so the former city manager and I and the HR director met with council to go over that, came up with a three-year plan, where the first year for FY15, the current year, we helped bring those who were very low up to just somewhat low. And then over the next two years, try to bring people up so that by the time they're, by the time we're in FY17, we have fair wages for our employees. They're still not extravagant wages, but they would be fair. And the most important thing is that we were able to then keep excellent employees and attract excellent employees. We were having a real problem being able to get the kind of qualified applicants that we wanted for some of our positions because of our pay scale. And we were very concerned that we might lose some folks that we have, that we really value. The three-year plan to bring people up to those FY17 market wages is about $2 million. And we needed to find a way to pay that with ongoing funds. What I did was I looked through what the impact would be for FY16. The number was very close to $400,000, which approximated two cents on the property tax. We would have quite an opportunity for FY17 to accommodate the portion that wasn't already covered in FY15, but that would remain for FY17. And I feel comfortable that taking this two-cent increase at this time gets us to a place that allows us to adequately fund the salary increase.
And the 400,000 and the two cents associated with it?
Right.
How does that accommodate the half cent that is required?
Well, it doesn't. We ended up cutting a little bit. And so I'll, I'll point this out in a few minutes, but, you know, essentially, we're only getting about $330,000 with this two-cent increase. So it's, we still had to tighten belts. And one of the things I was very pleased about is that the department heads in going through their budgets were very careful, and we had very limited cost increases for other kinds of supplies and activities in the various departmental budgets. And I think you'll see that when you go through. What it does mean is that many things we would like to do are not included. So very few new staff, very few new kinds of activities, many things that we would like to do, we did not put in the budget. And we're hoping that as we go forward to FY17, we have a real opportunity to take that next step. But it's just not, I think, something that is easy to do for FY16. I did not want to go over two-cent tax increase, and I worked really hard at that. What we had to do, though, to balance the general fund was make some real hard decisions also about where big money goes, which is the capital budget. I want to go through that a little bit. For the Ethan Allen Project, we needed to find about $1.2 million in capital monies to match the $1.24 million in TAP funds. And we were not able to do that all in this year. We split Ethan Allen over two years, so we'll do some in FY16 and we'll do some in FY17 while making sure that we meet the criteria for the grant monies that would be triggered. I mentioned that we tried to set aside $500,000 for street work, $500,000 for sidewalks, $500,000 for ADA improvements. So I took $500,000 of the sidewalk money, and I put it towards our contribution to the Ethan Allen Project. I took $200,000 of the $500,000 for ADA improvements and put it to the design work for the library improvements. I took, I used Speed Camera Fund monies, which we have enough of to do this, for $300,000 in the sidewalks and $300,000 in ADA sidewalk retrofits, so that we did not have to use general fund monies for those projects and those initiatives. So this way, we were able to do some major investment in infrastructure in doing the project at Ethan Allen in New Hampshire, which goes a long ways to helping make New Hampshire Avenue attractive to new business, be a real visible effort that shows that we care about what happens along New Hampshire Avenue and with economic development there. And, huh, Flower Avenue, Greed Street, I meant Green Street. And it'll be a very welcoming place when it gets done. We continue to do our sidewalk and street improvements and our stormwater infrastructure improvements, all of which are essential to continue to do on a regular basis, or else we get behind, and then we have real problems. For park improvements, we will complete what we will start this year in doing a dog park. And this dog park is a modest dog park. I'm not proposing that a larger phase be done in FY16. And I think that what we'll do is we'll see how that dog park comes about and how it gets used and how it functions before we determine if, if expansion is feasible, either physically feasible or financially feasible. The Colby Avenue Playground is to get underway in FY15. It may be completed in FY15. If not, we'll have to just move a little bit of the funds over for it into FY16. And then Sligo Mill Overlook Park, which we hope gets some consensus around a design and can move forward. The Colby Avenue and Sligo Mill Overlook Park projects will receive a good amount of the funds from the program Open Space, and we have filed for grants for the dog park work and for some of the work at Sligo Mill Overlook Park. We will not know until May if those grants come through. I've made an $800,000 contribution to the Equipment Replacement Reserve, which is about what is recommended for the uses in the coming year. With the Facility Maintenance Reserve, there's about $500,000 in there, we'll be using about $56,000. I'm not putting a contribution in there, I'm not also using a lot out of there. It may be something that we could use for certain uses, but at this point, I'm trying to save the money and see how we go forward on, when we get to more significant facility projects.
Is there any restriction on money in the Facility Maintenance Reserve?
There's not. It's, it is a discussion item for council. I try to look over the long term for how we do facility building improvements with the city. And there's a certain amount that we can handle at any one time, just in terms of staffing and in terms of the disruption that it causes, as well as how much it costs to do. I'm proposing that we proceed with design and engineering for the middle-cost option for the library renovation and small expansion. Then also do the concept design for the renovation and, of the police level and filling in the atrium floor. That is something that I think will take a good amount of work as a concept design. So I'm not anticipating it move faster than that for FY16.
Can you just remind us what the library middle-cost option was?
It's about $3.1 million worth.
Which one of the options?
And it had a small, it was, it didn't go as far out towards Philadelphia as the larger option.
Did it leave the mural in place or remove?
It leaves the mural in place.
Then I think I know the option.
Yeah.
It expands the space for the staff.
That's right. For FY17, then it could move into library construction, and it could move into design and engineering for the police level work.
And nothing on public works?
That's right. They're, they don't, they're not really at a place where they can move on it very fast in talking with the Public Works Director. She's, she says that what they've got right now is pretty good, that they really feel like they would rather have some of this other stuff happen, get a little bit further into it before they're ready to move forward with public works.
Regarding the library?
Mm-hmm.
Is it possible that we could wrap soft costs into a bond? Or is it only construction?
Yeah. And, and we've had discussions with the, with the representative from the entity that holds the community center bond right now. We, we will likely be coming back to you to refinance, it's essentially to refinance it, save about $160,000 over the next 10 years of that. We can roll the cost of the library into that or take out a separate one with the low interest rates that they have right now. So that is something that we can consider at this point.
So the bond would pay for design work?
It can pay for design work. I'm not proposing that it would include that at this time. However, there is a resolution that can be done by the council that would allow it to be part of that, and that's something that we may consider.
I, I hope we would be talking about getting state funding, state bond funding, where we would provide a match. Is that, is this stuff?
That's, that's a different kind of bond.
Right.
I'm happy to look for any kind of grant funding, which a state bond is. But that's, we would be trying to do that for many of these projects.
Right.
Where we're more likely to get it has to do with the police level improvements.
Right. So I mean, you aren't on the FY18 screen. I do see that you have $2,500,000 for the police and construction in FY18.
That's right.
And nearly $3.2 million for the library.
That's right.
So we're talking about borrowing the better part of $6 million for two different projects within two years.
That could be. Again, I think there are some other options related to funding for the police level improvements that will help us. I think there's grant funding, and I think that there's, for some of the activities, there's use of Speed Camera Funds that could be used. For FY19, we've got some design work to renovate Hefner and do the construction there. It's a relatively small project, but this would be where we design and the Public Works Phase Two with the construction the following year. My guess is that we would not accomplish all of these things through FY20, that something's going to lag a little bit. What I was trying to space them out so it made sense, so that there was a plan, and I think that that's something that is realistic, is something that's feasible. Yes?
There's nothing here in regard to the recreation center?
There's not. And I, and that's one of the things that I, I want to see what happens when we get our, our two different studies back that relate to that. I think that there's real options for that that may have other kind of funding associated with them that we need to pursue. But I was not comfortable putting them in here with, with such a wide-open scope of the options.
Right. Okay. No, I understand that that makes all the sense in the world, is that you don't even, you can't even begin to estimate the cost, much less when it would appear in the capital improvement budget.
Right. But I do think that it's important to keep it on the list. And so one of the things, you know, I think there's this, there's what we do with the Washington McLachlan property. I think there's a variety of other kinds of things out there that, that we have to keep looking at, and, and we're going to have to keep revisiting this list to see what makes sense.
Thank you.
The projects, the four projects that you've named add up to something like $7 million-ish, and it's hard to imagine that a rec center replacement wouldn't cost as much as those four combined, $7 million, some, you know, whatever. So, you know, if we're $7 million in debt from these other projects, then before entering into the rec center discussion, then that points us, you know, that stacks the cards a bit against that.
One of the things, though, that I think, you know, has been discussed with the, with the New Hampshire Avenue project is that there may very well be some kind of sale of some of the property. There may be some kind of public-private partnership about something with the property. So there may be some other kind of options that help offset some of that cost. And I just don't know what those might be. I mean, I think that's part of what we.
That's one of the ideas that staff has had for a long time, is that the new rec center could be built privately.
Yeah.
As part of a mixed-use building, and it might be.
Could be.
Greatly reduce the net cost to the city.
It's, it's something to investigate. It's, it's absolutely speculative.
But you're right.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, it's, it's a significant question. On the two-cent tax increase, it is the first tax increase, the tax rate increase since 2002. Usually, there's an annual increase in the assessable base. The two times when there hasn't been were FY14 and coming up for FY16. The two-cent increase will generate $388,000, but only really adds $324,000 because of that difference in the assessable base. For a property owner who's got a property value of $300,000, that's talking $60 a year, $500,000 property, $100 a year, et cetera. At this point, we're not expecting to see a county property tax increase on top of that. I think that this is a reasonable increase, but I took it very seriously, and I tried to keep it as small as possible. There's a couple of things that we might look at as we go through this process and as we go through the year. We can review the capital projects as we go through the year. We may be at, at a time in January, be able to look through the list. How are we doing on these capital projects? Are we still on track to get them all done in FY16? Have we made any savings on, on what was projected? Have we received some additional grants? There's a variety of grants that are possible. We might receive some more funds regarding tax duplication or the cable franchise agreements. And I do have some new information just this afternoon from our attorney. I'll send out an email about how flexible the different cable monies are to be used for operating expenses. And, you know, it may be that we don't need an additional full-time position in the city manager's office related to economic development. I think this is something that we need to talk about, and it kind of goes by what options we have for, we have to put out an announcement for a deputy city manager, we need to go through these various steps. And, and I think we're not going to know right away, but I wanted to leave some flexibility that we would get some specialized economic development assistance. We may be able to get that without a full-time position, and I just don't know that. The timeline, as we go forward, we've had the presentation this evening. We go through at least three budget work sessions. We'll have next Monday a budget public hearing, and again, Monday, the 27th, the budget public hearing and budget reconciliation. And then in May, the budget ordinances, at which the public's also able to testify on the budget. I have enjoyed receiving public comment so far about what should be in the budget. It's, I would have liked to have been able to. It's, I would have liked to have been able to add everything everybody wanted, not had that, I've not been able to do that. But I, I do encourage people to talk with you and to talk with me about how this budget might affect them or the kinds of things they want to see in it. And I look forward to your questions as we go through the work sessions. I have received a couple's requests for information to be prepared to bring to those work sessions. If you've got other ones, I really would love to hear about it in advance. So we're prepared and we get you what you need for those discussions. I think that's it.
If I can just reinforce that it's helpful to get those requests for information in as early as possible, because the later they are, the harder it is to find out how they might ripple through.
That's right.
And we'll have all of these meetings that have been laid out in the schedule to take a finer look at individual areas. I would say tonight, if anybody has any general questions that they want to just put out there, but we're essentially looking at getting requests for additional information and proceeding with the other pieces as we go.
The other thing.
We don't, we don't have to do anything additional tonight.
You don't have to do anything tonight. Also, as you have other ideas for things in terms of budget reconciliation things, it's always helpful to have those mentioned early as opposed to waiting till the date when it says budget reconciliation. If there's some of that information that you'd like to start costing out with me or whatever, please, please feel free to do so.
And we'll start putting things on the reconciliation list and it might be helpful to kind of have that as a reference as we go through so that we know what's, what's been added to the list. And my sense is that if, as there have been requests from the public for certain things, we heard some tonight, it's good to have a kind of a tracking list on those that I would say might not necessarily be kind of our budget reconciliation list unless we want to say, yes, we want to include those too. And we'll kind of treat those equally as we go through.
Okay. Wanted to make just two other statements. One was that in going through the proposed budget, wasn't really happy about the performance measures that are listed in there. Many of them, I think, are not that useful. That's something to go through. I was not in a position to insist on changes on that this, this time. But I would like to have this be very different in the next budget. The other thing, just the production of the budget was a pain in the butt to say we've, we're going to be doing some different kinds of, of production in the future that I think will make it a little bit smoother. And I want to, as we go through, have this, so that there's lots more, it's called transparency, but a lot more that's visible to the public about how we go through this process.
But I will say that it was very helpful to find that there's actually a page numbering system through this budget, which there has not been before.
That's a good thing.
Seems kind of basic, but.
Yeah. But it's a whole lot easier to find something when you can say it's on page 63 as opposed to if you go to such and such a section.
Trying.
Just a few small questions.
Please.
In FY15, the old Tacoma Business Association and the Crossroads Development Authority and the proposed budget were $30,000 each. Councilmember Mail proposed that an additional $10,000 be granted to the business, to OTBA, 5,000 of which was contingent on match from the District of Columbia that didn't appear that year. This year, however, you're proposing $37,000 for each of those two organizations. I wonder why the $7,000 increase for each of them. I do believe that 2,000 of that for OTBA was tied to maintaining street planting boxes.
I, I'm going to have to find out more information to, to, and report back on that one.
Yeah.
The, the HCD budget is on Thursday, so we'll make sure that at least by Thursday we'll have that information.
My, my predisposition would be to stick with last year's unamended rates. In other words, the OTBA rate before the proposed increase was, the increase was proposed and to, to match the CDA to that.
Okay.
Yeah. I would just agree with Seth on that.
Yeah. Let's see. Another small thing, and this is not in the budget document, but I advocate the elimination of the discount on residential parking permits for owners of hybrid vehicles, which take up just as much road space, just as much processing cost for the permits as any other vehicle, and sometimes underperform other vehicles that are not hybrids in terms of gas mileage. No one, no one in Tacoma Park needs an incentive to buy a hybrid. It enters into no one's calculations. There's no reason to maintain that reduction in fees. And one other larger question, this gets to something that the mayor was talking about a moment ago. You did have, thank you, meetings with us, individual council members to talk about budget priorities and maybe special requests. Are there any special requests from council members that are not reflected in your budget document? Can you talk about them now?
I don't think, I, I don't think that I included any special request from any council member. There, I think there were at least two requests for assistance for either kind of man-up and youth collaborative activities. We have a very small amount that's just, again, through the recreation budget, the same as last year, so we were not able to accommodate that request. There, there were a couple other, they were small and, and I didn't hear something that was strong, so, that was repeated by a number of council members, so there wasn't anything specially incorporated.
Yeah. I, I didn't make any requests myself and so just addressing my colleagues, it'd be great to know what requests you have put in so that when we do go through the individual departmental budgets, that we can consider funding levels for various things in light of the global requests, including ones that are not in the budget document.
Yeah.
And not, and not just deal with those at reconciliation time, after which we've, at that point, we will have already discussed all of these departmental budgets.
Yeah. I mean, I think that there were a couple council members who didn't want a tax increase, tax rate increase. That was something I couldn't accommodate.
Okay.
And that was, I think that was, those were the major ones.
All right. I have just one more thing. And that is in, in communications, there's, there's a significant change here. I'm looking at page 138. The, first, there may be an error on the table on the bottom of 138 where the columns are marked adopted FY14 and proposed FY15.
Yes. We have a number of corrections that need to come in.
Yeah. So that should probably be adopted FY15 and proposed FY16. So there's the increase in media specialist assistant from .35 full-time equivalents to 2.5 full-time equivalents. So that's creation of two full-time equivalents, although I'll note that the increase is a little bit stranger going into the table in the middle. It's two and a half full-time equivalents without benefits. Can you elaborate on what's going on there, please?
Yes. The way that we provide services through City TV, we have three full-time staff and then we have a variety of people who've primarily been contractors that put in several hours, maybe on, at different times for different events and that kind of thing. And that's how we have, you know, that's how we function. What we were just informed about a month ago was that because we direct those staff, those contractors, for what times they need to be there to do the work, they should be counted as part-time employees. There's not, they don't, none of them have a lot of hours. We have a variety of people. It's very much like recreation does for who's going to staff the desk or that kind of thing. They've got a list of people and they, you know, and they use them that way. And so for that reason, we had to change them, change their category.
So those employees are not in the union?
That's right.
And do they have contracts?
They don't, they don't work enough hours.
What's the basis of their employment? They're at-will employees?
Yes. I mean, this, it's just, you know, it's, it's one of these things where they have a certain number of hours.
They get a W-2 instead of a 990 and maybe we pay some payroll taxes for them.
That's right.
Yeah.
And one of the things that, so that it does make it cleaner about workers' compensation, which is appropriate to pay for them.
Yeah. I, I have some reluctance that I know the councilmember Mail shares about the addition of full-time staff, but these aren't full-time staff there.
These aren't full-time, it's, you know, 15 part-time staff, something like that.
Sounds like a management headache, but okay, thanks for the explanation.
Yeah.
I have one question and it's a technical question. It has to do with the assessing, property assessing process. The next triennial will be reflected in FY17.
That's right.
Budget. We're working on the FY16 budget. So that means that the actual field work will be starting to be done sometime soon.
That's right.
Do you know any idea when that will happen?
I don't know exactly when it starts. You know, it has to be done and computed for the FY16, I mean, for the February 2016 letter that gets sent out. So my assumption is.
I think it all has to be done because the, the letters that go out to property owners go out around the first of January so that there's an opportunity to appeal.
So it's, it's at the end.
So it all has to be done in the, basically the second half of this calendar year.
This calendar year. And, you know, one of the things that was interested in, in talking with the, with the staff of the assessment office, I mean, they monitor this stuff all the time. They're looking through all the different building permits and they, you know, they see what different kind of land sales or how theirs are going. So they monitor this all the time.
So I guess my question is, what I'm getting to, is the extent to which we will begin to get ahead of time, sort of indicators from the assessment office of what they're discovering in this particular triennial assessment before they get the whole job complete. So that it'll give you some guidance if it's been, being done at the end of this calendar year, to give you a bit more confidence with your longer-range projections. Because frankly, everything hangs on, on those assessments.
That's right.
We're looking, it's sort of like a tired swimmer saying, oh, I think we see, see dry land ahead.
That's right.
And if somehow or another that recedes, and I don't think it will, I think we can be confident about it, but it's just sort of a little scary proposition.
Well, and that's, that's part of the reason that this budget is really tight. And it's, we're trying to be conservative because there's a, there's a, you know, a year and a half before we're there.
Right.
I, you know, I think that the, the discussions that, that I've had so far are that, you know, lots more building permits are, you know, are coming in for renovations. There's some estimates in advance about what that brings in. I remember last year when, when we got in some of the information, they were already noting that the city was going out for the Tacoma Junction RFP process for development. And so that, that was out there, hanging out there as a potential property tax generator in a future year. So they, they look at these things in advance. That doesn't mean that they necessarily share them enough that we can bank on them.
Right.
I just, but they do feel good about them.
And, and we also knew at this time last year, as we were doing the FY15 budget, that the FY16 budget was going to be really tight.
That's right. And that's why last year was very tight as well.
And, and we also know, we can see in your proposed budget, with the unappropriated reserve level being just a skosh above 3 million, which we know is the bare minimum just to have the float to pay the bills.
Right.
That we're, as we're heading for dry land, as we're swimming, we know that there are some riptides and some whirlpools on the way there.
I know. That's the thing. I mean, we, it's, it's just like, you know, scary, we're all wet.
You know, I, I do, that's part of the reason that I, I put in this discussion about, you know, some flexibility as we, as we go ahead, that really we are going to have to be talking through the course of this year about how we're doing and if there's some options for, for handling some of these things in a different way. I think what's before you is a reasonable budget, but I think that it's, it's only wise for us to have a lot of discussion on a periodic basis we go through the fiscal year.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. And I think on that point, we will adjourn.
Thank you.